Upper low radiator. Or is that?
There is board.
A heater. Well, I think one of anybody in here don't they?
Well, they started that trend a long time ago.
Yeah, right.
Somebody had just raised a question. Of the correct address.
Well, it's been a couple of according to. Two or three different ones. I've been calling fifteen hundred.
Well, that's what this shows on the agenda.
I just saw it. I didn't pay any attention.
Billing address was N P, but when I built it in slash. Ten years ago, I told somebody in the city.
I would hope not, but I just just wanted you to know.
Well, I'm calling it thirteen or two now.
Okay, but you were told fifteen hundred.
Yeah. Because that's because that was one of the addresses that I had down. The city asked.
Hey, the main thing, yeah. Well, don't concern the main thing as well as at lot ten, thirty-four.
Legal.
Okay, that's.
I got that's on that's on that is on flats and then we had surveyors come over. Jerry Brundrett came over and asked and also.
Well, that's the main thing. Okay. He's Jerry Moore, we just talked to about this.
So then.
He says, he says, he always thought it was thirteen oh five. But the city's telling him it's fifteen hundred and the last time he came up here, which I was.
Right, right. They told him it's fifteen hundred. That's what.
The main thing, the main thing, of course, I'm concerned is the legal.
Okay.
But if the legal, if the legal is correct, then it doesn't make any difference. Sylvia called me. Last week sometime about it. And I guess we just need to get together sometime and figure out what the heck. He's a good.
The steps are better because he knows you got to step up. In Japan, you don't see.
Well, yeah. Yeah, better. What's going on there? What's going through your mind?
We should already have a plan. And we don't, and we don't. That's a problem. They got four plants, but then.
Well, going on this.
Yeah. That's what I don't.
This is kind of working out of a bond Reggie had. Whether he had air. What kind of coverage he had.
Right.
He had to have a bond, but it just said.
No, I understand.
Maybe it might be very well they have something they do. Try to collect something.
They should have heard. Hey Sylvia, they should already have. They should already have.
Can I just call you a last couple of minutes? Grabbing a ten inch. Those four hundred pieces have a little bit of language and we didn't handle it. We had a plan just instead of put a note out to show. It is during the season. For the.
We spent all this.
Yeah, I know.
Did you get it?
Nah, not the person.
You know. Johnny. Get the genie.
Oh, yeah, what you showing me?
Yeah, you don't.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Really? Oh, that's good. Thank you, Johnny. You were telling me there at the fight.
That plan is great.
Forgot to keep it.
That plan. Oh.
You know, it's we've been very fortunate. You already have. Then it's like. But anyway. So it's kind of worked out. And you know, this way it kind of makes. Makes us. Because they, I like. Kind of want to make the entertainment part.
Is that funny?
He says he's gonna be a Santa Claus.
I know.
Oh, see. He always gonna ask me.
And I need help at all.
Put him with that Santa Claus.
Yeah.
All right.
Santa Claus or take pictures. Do a fundraiser, put the money back. After the parade. You're gonna do it though.
Oh, see. Well, that's good, that's good.
We're gonna have an elf.
Oh, see, you gonna be there?
Yeah. Yeah, he needs to be.
Can't you see him with little green shoes?
No, but you don't. Maybe he had more than one.
No.
I tell you what you're gonna be my reindeer. You can be Rudolph before you.
I thought one of them would be.
I'm sure I was a bit. I ain't doing this, you know? Yeah, you be be Rudolph.
Yeah, just.
And uh. The service that you see this a key to the album. You know, they hit it.
Well, I don't make. I don't make. I didn't get one of those. They asked me.
But they didn't ask me.
So I can read. Oh, mercy me.
What are you thinking about fixing? You're gonna do a bigger deal. Go ahead.
Food box? Just got it.
Understand, I don't see anything.
Where's my uniform? Like, I don't get a yellow. That's some good. Ain't a matter of fact. That'd be the simplest thing to do.
That's what I thought. You got both some of your Italian offers or some of that for corporate. That be easy? Pretty easy.
Call the order. Regular meeting of the city council, city of Ransus Pass. The number November eighteenth, twenty thirteen at seven P M. Regular meeting. Invitational be given by myself. Lord, please bless everybody here in this room and our community and surrounding people that live around us. Bless all our kids, our teachers, all our service people. Everybody that affects everybody day by day. People that they meet. A special blessing and thanks to our our Ransus Pass football team doing good and moving on in playoffs. And also for all our kids that are striving to move forward. We also ask that you uh. Look at us when we come to our decisions, give us the the. Reason to do what's right for the best of the community. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic with which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This will bring us to item number three, the constant agenda. As follows, all of the following items of the constant agenda are considered to be routine by the city council. And will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of this item unless a council member so requests. If the discussion is desired, the item will be removed from the constant agenda. Will be considered separately. We have items A, B, and C.
I move we approve the consent agenda as written.
I have a question. Do we do we need a second before a question?
No, no.
Okay. I didn't get the November fourth meeting. The minutes for November the fourth, did everybody get him on their packet? And I was the only one that missed it.
Oh, my, that's item five.
Can we remove that from that since we don't have the minutes?
Yes, we'll do that.
Just remove it.
Does he have to adjust his?
Okay, well, I move we approve the consent agenda of items B and C.
Okay.
Second of motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This will bring us to item number four. Consider an act on a letter of support for the Science and Spanish Club Network's. Grant proposal of the Gulf of Mexico's Golf Shed trilogy. Sea grasses, whipping cranes, and watersheds. Means submitted to the Gulf of Mexico programs. More spiders.
I thought it was one, but it's not, okay.
Okay, Lord bless those spiders.
Keep them away.
As Zach was saying, it submits the Gulf of Mexico programs grant funding opportunity. Gulf of Mexico programs grant funding opportunity entitled Gulf of Mexico Partnerships twenty thirteen.
Um, council, this, uh, Mr. Gonzalez. It's not committing the city to any money or making like ideas. So this time have to have some kind of back to public accountability or the political subdivision. The letter would allow, uh, Richard to submit further grants without having to come to a council.
Yes, uh, Richard Gonzalez. Uh, the Science and Spanish Club Network is now its own five oh one C three nonprofit organization. And the program's been operating thirteen years, ten right here in Aransas Pass I S D. And one of our major projects that's evolved over the last five years is the designation of World Sea Grass Day. And we designated Aransas Pass World Sea Grass Capital, Sea Grass Capital of the World last year. Uh, we have a proclamation written that substantiates why and the rationale is very valid. We're one of the only cities with forty percent of its city limits in the in the water. And in that water on Red Fish Bay, we have an abundance of sea grasses and it's part of the state scientific study area with Texas Parks and Wildlife. We want to take that to the next level. It is now time in its fifth year, World Sea Grass Day on March the seventh will collaborate with the world, the world's leading research scientists in sea grasses. There are formidable scientists in the United Kingdom, Indo-Pacific countries. Uh, in Australia that are in the same level that we are here. We need to tell the public how important sea grasses are to the food chain. It is why people come on the weekends to go fishing. It is why we were once the shrimp capital of the world. So it is a very significant part of our community on a daily basis. So as you discuss other issues in your agenda, like the drainage. And rezoning and so forth, please consider the conservation and preservation of our sea grasses in Red Fish Bay. We will be proceeding to apply for various grant opportunities, both in the public, federal, state, regional dollars, as well as with private companies. So we will be asking for letters of support, not only from the city, but also from Rosemary at the chamber. Because you are a significant part of our community. We also will be asking and have had in the past, uh, significant support from the school district because of the programming at A C blind Charlie Marshall. So with that, I do ask you to support this, um, letter of support and other letters in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. I'll make the motion, we approve the letter of support to the city of Ransus Pass and the Science and Spanish Club Network for their, is there support letters?
I second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 This will bring us to item number five, considering that on the awarding contract for baking services for the city of Aransas Pass.
Um, council, this is an R F P we sent out for banking services. We ended up advertising a few times. Prosperity Bank was the only sub bidder to come on Prosperity Bank is on the current carry to the new page. So that is simply an extension of the re contract. No additional costs, no savings.
Well, I move we award the contract for banking services to Prosperity Bank of Aransas Pass.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Bring us to item number six. Consider an act of on awarding contract for electricity services for the city of Aransas Pass.
Um, council, this is another R F P that we sent down for electrical service providers or current on the basis of this seminar of twenty thirteen. Our current rate is about seventy dollars per kilowatt hour. We have, uh, soliciting companies to be participating in the business of Aransas Pass. We received three bids. The, uh, the bid we're recommending to council is, um, seeing this very serious. It's our kilowatt hour rate to fifty dollars. Saving to the city about sixty-five to eighty dollars a year.
Fifty dollars?
Fifty dollars per kilowatt.
Okay.
From seven dollars.
Okay.
Um, in addition to that, there are some, um, what are called rebucks or environmental savings that they're going to work with our overall usage. And it turns into rebate for the city about twelve thousand dollars. So there's overall cost savings for the city eighty to a hundred per year.
Thank y'all for inviting me out. Uh, my name's J T Harries and I do work with T X U Energy. And we want to thank y'all for giving us the opportunity to come in and get y'all bid in a quote. We have been running into a lot of the cities that have been higher rates than what, uh, a lot of the prices that are out there. By coming in and giving you a bid with T X U Energy, which T X U is one of the largest electric providers in the state of Texas. Uh, we're going back and giving some opportunities for the, uh, cities to come down their prices since they are nonprofit organizations. So that's what we're looking at doing and hoping that we can win y'all's bid.
We still have a question instead of that is because on here it has point seven zero.
Per, per kilowatt hour.
Okay. Okay, alright. I'm gonna make sure I.
Decimal points are important.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, very important.
Well, I make a motion that we approve the T X U, uh, R F P.
I second.
For electricity.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Right. You get it done? Okay, I'll bring us to item number seven. Considering an act of. Terrainio, terrainio inter local agreement. Environmental Health Department between the city of Ransus Pass and San Patricio County for health related services.
This is, uh, a recurring contract. Harness for our, uh, to restaurant inspections as well as deputy systems. It's, uh, it's a win win service for both of us.
I move that we approve the triennial inter local agreement between the city of Ransus Pass and San Patricio County for the environmental health department.
All in favor, say aye.
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 This will bring us to item number eight. Considering an act of the inter local cooperation agreement of roads drainage between the city of Ransus Pass and Aransas County.
This one, uh, this one for the new. Our industry is to, uh, inter local, we are in a special. As development begins to progress toward the rock port area. We must ensure that our water supply is protected and the development standards are that which we're going to want to. Have our facilities improved to improve toward an extension areas here in the city. There is a class that's gonna come before you, um, next month of prompt discussion. There, uh, is some growth occurring there and, uh, without entering into an inter local, we're, we're pretty much in the mercy of minimum standards. The commissioners and I had, um, some, some good discussion on what to investigate to the city and, um. So the roads and drainage, uh, would be an inter local that we answer.
Well, I move that we. Uh, except the contract, the inter local and, uh, corporation agreement between roads and drainage between the city of Aransas Pass and Aransas County.
Second of motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Number nine, bring us to public hearing. Request of Mr. Glenn Smith to rezone to, uh, M H Oklahoma District. The property is described as lots nine to ten, block two thirty-seven. Ransus Pass, Burton and Danforth. Acres of ten point zero zero. Two twenty-five West Young Street, the property is owned for R seven B residential district.
Thank you, Mayor. I declare a public hearing open for the purchase of taking up the request of. Mr. Glenn Smith to rezone lots nine and ten block two thirty-seven. Presently zoned R seven B, the request to rezone to Mobile Home District. I would point out that the planning and zoning commission on November the eleventh. Uh, has recommended your approval of the, of the request. Is Mr. Smith present? Mr. Smith, you want to come forward, please? Tell the council what you have in mind.
Well, I want to put in an R V park.
Okay.
And this is a small one, like twelve sixteen lots. And I've been trying to get this sucker done since I had a meeting with her in July. And every time it comes up, something happens. But I'd appreciate it since I didn't come down here that you could okay this dude and let me get on my way.
Alright. Members of the council, if you have any questions to Mr. Smith.
But how long will it take you to build this R V park?
Well, I wanted to. When I started, I figured I'd get it done by September and I'd be ready for the Yankees. But. Ain't no way that's gonna happen now. So I'll, if it's approved, I won't start until probably next February, March.
Any other questions?
Okay, is this a R V park or a mobile? Or a, uh, kind of like a mobile, a trailer?
Well, it's R V, they are trailers.
But you're not gonna have like a trailer for them to live there permanently? Or is it gonna be?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. I have one out there that I'm living in permanently, but. Not the rest of it. I have a manufactured home on the property.
Anything else with the council? Is there anyone present who is opposed to the application? If not, then I declare the public hearing closed. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
You want to?
So do I hear a motion on item nine?
No.
Okay, I mean, item ten, I'm sorry. Considering that, request of Mr. Glenn Smith to rezone to Mobile Home District. Property is described as lots nine to ten, block two thirty-seven, Ransus Pass, Burton and Danforth. Acres of ten, two twenty-five West Young Street. Property is owned for R seven B residential district. Two twenty-five West Young Street, property is zoned for R seven B residential district.
Well, I was looking at the package we see, we had some letters that are in oppose, opposing us to rezoning the area.
What were some of the reasons? What are we gonna do about the drainage? What can we do about that?
In the normal course of development, he was talking about drainage and all of the good stuff. He's not asking for any type of problem, he's just a weird emergency. Weird emergency of what he's zoning is required. He's not asking for any type of permit or plan or anything that would allow him to do that.
It's my understanding that the planning zoning commission was unanimous in their decision.
Yes, I believe so.
Yeah, I believe.
Did they address all these issues? What was their?
I'm sure they're putting that in issue, that's the voice of the planning zone, correct?
Yes.
First off, there's this that runs down the property. In fact, it's a trench. It's four foot deep. The city did that a long time ago. East Young is a street that runs all the way back. So, you know, and I'm right at the corner. I'm at Commercial and East Young, right there in that corner. So there's no problem with drainage. In fact, my neighbor, who works for Ranses Pass Independent School District, is all for it. In fact, I talked to him tonight, and we're gonna talk tomorrow. There's no problem that I can see other than getting this sucker on the road. If there's a drainage problem, I don't know of any.
Of course, all of our, that is gonna be up to our code. What are your sites gonna be a little bit clean, or concrete, or?
First off, Ranses Pass has strict rules on how you make, build this thing. It has to be twenty-five to fifty-five. You have to have a ten yard, ten foot, twenty yard. You have to have a four, five foot offset because, so, you know, the way I wanna build it is the way you guys are telling me to build it. That's exactly what I'm gonna do.
Seems like you don't follow planning zoning regulations.
I'd rather be with you because you got the hammer.
Yes, sir. Alright, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
On that note, I move that we approve the request of Mr. Glenn Smith to rezone to Mobile Home District. Property described as lots nine and ten, block two thirty-seven, Ranses Pass, Burton and Danforth. Ten acres, two twenty-five West Young Street.
Second motion.
I'll first say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I oppose.
I'm voting for it. I'm voting for it. Thank you, sir. Thank you, pass.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Now, I get for it. Yes, sir, thank you. This will bring us to item number eleven. Public hearing on request of Jerry Moore to rezone general business to heavy commercial, the property is described as outlet nineteen, tract thirty-four. Three point two five acres. The property is fifteen hundred South Commercial. Mr. Lawrence?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a public hearing to take up the request of Jerry Moore to rezone from general business to heavy commercial. The property is described as outlet nineteen, and I think we've got a top, a title that should be tract three instead of tract thirty-four. Uh, three four twenty-five acres. Mr. Moore's present, I believe, or what? Jerry, you wanna come forward please? Tell the council what you have in mind to do.
Uh, yes, thank you for having me this evening. I'm Jerry Moore. I'm the owner of Bills Bull Barn. And as per related to by the minutes, I'm just simply requesting to expand my business. I'll be adding, I have eighty-four stalls. I'm requesting to add another fourteen on basically what is a vacant part of the land that I now have. And that's it. The last set of stalls that I've built was over ten years ago, and I'm assuming it was heavy commercial or something similar back then. And since then, the zoning's been changed maybe, but, because I don't remember having to come before the council or the planning commission to make any changes, so I assume it's been changed. Here I am requesting to go back to what it was.
That's Bills Bull Barns?
Bills Bull Barns, yes.
Okay. There also was a question about the address, the the application and the zoning minutes reflected as in fifteen hundred South Commercial.
Uh, I would say in the slang, my bad, I guess, because uh, years ago, when I submitted an application to build the aforementioned set of barns that were built in oh one or oh two, somewhere, and I'll blame it on somebody, this is the city that's not here anymore, I guess, that the address was fifteen hundred. But I have, since then, and probably since I filed any kind of paperwork requesting this, I was told that AEP calls it thirteen oh two South Commercial, so if that's not a problem, we'll call it thirteen oh two South Commercial from here on. Although it's a five acre tract that is in different, that has different legal descriptions. But you are, you have been given, best of my knowledge, according to surveyor, the legal.
Correct.
Legal description. Yes, I, 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 I have no clue where I got fifteen hundred. Nothing painted on the curb and.
Sorry, I did.
Yeah.
I wanted to raise the question so there wouldn't be any confusion.
Yes, okay, yeah, certainly, and we're all on the same page, I think, starting June oh two.
Okay.
It's just a question where we don't want to talk about this more about, um, because the council, there was, has been changes in zoning since the time of the administration in Bill B. Morris. There has been reservations about the building, the building of the partners. He's been very interested in that, so, um, planning, there's a relationship away from the house. I think, I think away from the house, it's been very, very, very diverse that, although it's not a fire, it's a fire. I also have a question. You have the, what is it, Park and Store or Park and Sale or something like that?
That thing has been such a great success that they come and go so fast, right? Got the first car on yet. But, because it hasn't been empty and it hasn't, it hasn't been an encumbrance on anybody. Management kind of fell through on me that, on that, and it hasn't been a, uh, you know, any kind of a concern for me. I haven't paid much attention to it, but I offer this, council, everybody on the seat. If you want, I'll put your car there for sale.
I guess my question is, is that gonna be, is that gonna be?
That will still, that is, yeah, I'd love to.
So you're gonna build, where are you gonna build?
Well, I have to put a fence up.
Okay.
Um.
On the other side of that Park and Sale?
On, from, from when you drive by and see the sign that sits over the empty lot. Behind that, you will see a fence running north south. The barns will be behind that or west of that, back to the navigation. Or I think that's the county ditch running along the navigation ditch.
So you're going as good, if you can come?
But there will be nothing forward of the fence until perhaps we come and talk again. But as far now, it's.
How do you get a picture?
Well, there's a fence that's about halfway, um, back.
So how do you drive me down to get into your ankle side? Is it gonna be the?
It's, it's way back in the ditch. You'll barely even see, you really have to look, the, you really have to look to find where I'm, where I'm gonna put them. They're way back in the far western edge of the property.
So what's the entrance going to be at?
It will be the same entrance.
The same entrance?
I have brought an approach to the car lot. But the entrance to that boat, to the new sections, should I build even more beyond this? Or just these stalls that I'm trying to build now will be the existing entrance that I'll just have to drive through the property and access it behind the fence. There will not be a new entrance to these stalls.
Any other questions, council? Would you gonna build, this is gonna be inside the fence, right?
Yes, sir.
I'm just trying to...
Yeah, it's on the northwest corner.
To see what was gonna happen on that part right there. Has there been any issues with people as far as pulling into it, come walk the commercial road or anything? You know, any block of traffic or anything like?
No, and in fact, I, um, I just put it in, I put it in an electric gate and it allows, I do have eighteen wheelers that come in there and they've all been given electric gate openers. And the standard sized boat pulling a trailer, anybody like that, the management sees what they have and they're issued garage door opener, a gate opener, electric. So they don't have to stop at the keypad with the rest of them hanging out on the highway. So I have to take care of that.
Just, I would just?
Yeah, yeah, and these stalls will be bigger that, that may need to be addressed, but I just give another rope for everybody that comes in and needs something.
Anything else? Is there anyone in the audience who is opposed to the application? If not, I would declare the public hearing closed and call it council. Planning and zoning approved this application that is made on lower level. With that, Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
I'll bring us to item number twelve. Consider an act, request of Jerry Moore rezoned from General Business to Heavy Commercial. This property is described as outlet nineteen, tract thirty four, three point two five acres. Property is fifteen hundred South Commercial, illegal.
Do I hear a motion?
I'm making a motion with the request, request of Mr. Jerry Moore to rezone from General Business to Heavy Commercial. The property described as outlet nineteen, tract thirty four, should be tract three, tract three, excuse me? Three point two five acres. The property is fifteen hundred South Commercial.
Please second.
I'm gonna first say aye. This will bring us to item number thirteen. Consider an act of waiving unbilled water, sewer, and garbage. Mr. Mac Oliver. DBA Marshall Arts Studio located at five eighteen Bigelow. Com.